Call to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners Reed and Shertliff are absent this evening.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for November 15, 23, November 20, 23, and November 29, 23 were received. Any comments, additions? Minutes will stand as submitted. Proclamation. City of Helena proclamation. Whereas United Way of Lewis and Clark area works to unite resources, organizations, and people to transform our community for good. And whereas United Way focuses on housing, wellness, financial stability, the building block for a good quality of life. And whereas United Way provides the opportunity for people to work together to achieve more than any single person or organization can do alone. And whereas Montana Shares is a partnership of Montana-based nonprofit group devoted to improving the quality of life in the communities throughout the state. And whereas Montana Shares envision a Montana where all citizens acknowledge their responsibility to contribute to their communities and to the well-being of the state and nation for present and future generations. Whereas Montana Shares envision a Montana where all citizens value and address arts and culture, sustainable communities, protection of our environment, dignity in human services, and animal welfare, tolerance, and diversity, social activism, and educational opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Wilma Collins, Mayor of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim the week of December 9 through the 15, 2023, as United Way and Montana Shares Giving Week. Throughout this city, and I invite all the people of Helena to join the celebration of advancing the common good. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this fourth day of December, 2023. Madam Executive Director, would you come and receive this pledge, I mean this proclamation?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Emily McVeigh, the Executive Director of the United Way of the Lewis and Clark area. I just want to say thank you for the proclamation today, and thank you to the City of Helena, the staff, and the citizens of Helena for supporting United Way for the last 82 years. We have done a lot of good things, and I'm just very proud of the things that United Way is doing today and the things that we've done for the last 82 years. I want to thank Bill Crane for the great relationship we've built over the last four years. We tend to support the local nonprofits that work in human services, and Bill takes on the statewide groups that do other things. So, and we've really developed a great relationship over the last few years, and so I just want to thank him for working with us and all the great things we've done together for the last few years on the state employee charitable giving campaign, so spreading that statewide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I think Emily summed it up. I thank the city employees that support us. I thank all the employers in the state of Montana, in particular, all the employers' employees in the City of Helena that support Montana Shares and United Way. I won't go any longer, just thank you very much.
Board appointments. Consider HCC appointments for 2023 election. City Commissioners, Mayor Wilma Collins, HCC appointments. I am recommending the following board appointments. Helena Citizen Council District 3. Appointment of Sean Morrison to a term on the Helena Citizen Council as representative of District 3. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Helena Citizens Council District 4. Appointment of Sidney Austin to a term on the Helena Citizens Council as representative for District 4. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Appointment of Chase Eden to a term on the Helena Citizens Council as representative for District 4. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Appointment of Robert Schalak to a term on the Helena Citizens Council as representative of District 4. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Appointment of Janet Zimmerman to a term on the Helena Citizen Council as representative of District 4. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Helena Citizens Council District 5. Appointment of Rick Bolware to a term on the Helena Citizens Council as representative of District 5. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Appointment of Samuel Brown to a term on the Helena Citizens Council as representative of District 5. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Helena Citizens Council District 6. Appointment of Ann Anacraz to a term on the Helena Citizens Council as representative of District 6. Term will expire December 31, 2025. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the appointments to the HCC districts as stated in the appointment memo, with the terms beginning on January 1, 2024, and expiring on December 31, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. I'm also recommending the following board appointments. Downtown TIFF Advisory Board. Appointment of Benji Cosgrove to the Downtown TIFF Advisory Board as an art, music, or cultural organization representative within the district. This term is non-expiring. Golf Advisory Board. Appointment of Nicholas Blackin to a first term on the Golf Advisory Board. Term will expire October 31, 2026. Planning Commission. Appointment of Michael Newhouse to a first term on the Planning Commission. Term will expire May 17, 2026. Commissioners, any comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve the following board appointments as outlined in the memo entitled Board Appointments dated December 4, 2023. That's included in our packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Bid awards. Consider bid purchase award for wastewater treatment plant high-speed turbo blower system project number 23-11. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. We've brought you this project before when we brought you the Northwestern Energy Grant, where we were getting almost 50% based on the replacement of these blowers to save the energy. To put it in perspective, you're going to, we're going to get a savings in energy approximately $38,000 a year, and that is looking at the solar array that is out at the fleet or at the city shop out there, you're going to get energy of around $7,000 to $8,000 a year. So we, this is a lot more bang for our buck. You're getting time to replace it, and you're going to get about a 22% savings, and these blowers are 48% of the overall use of the wastewater treatment plant. So it's a great project, and then we get the grant for it. We had one bid that came in, and it came in at $278,967, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Leland. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I had two questions. One, can you explain what these blowers do? And then, second, is it unusual for us to get one bid on this type of project, or are there just not that many companies that can bid on them?
Mayor, Commissioner. These blowers are set up to blow air through our bioreactor that is at the wastewater treatment plant. We're trying to set up the best environment to have the bacteria that treat all of the waste that we have out there. So we're creating an anaerobic environment so that you have a bunch of bugs and make it happy. So we are just blowing air through the liquid and through the water to create this environment. So that is where a lot of the energy is, is to be able to get everything to go through the water that's out there. And in a situation like this, typically, you're only going to see one bidder. It's the type of blower that we want, and there just aren't that many manufacturers in the nation.
Awesome, thank you. And I think just for the public who may not have read our packet, this is a really, really cool project, given the fact that right now we're spending, I think, $100,000 a year on the energy to run these, and saving $38,000, I think, will be a huge benefit to the community.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to award the wastewater treatment plant high-speed turbo blower system project number 23-11 to the lowest responsible bidder, Falcon Environmental, in the amount of $278,967.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Commissioners' proposals, any? Reporter of the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Reporter of the City Manager.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Communications from the Helena Citizens Council. HCC Representative Rick Bolware, you have the floor.
Good evening, y'all. The HCC will not have a December meeting as usual, but we look forward to the swearing-in ceremony and elections of our officers at our January meeting. Thank you for your consideration, and we'd like to invite you to come and do the swearing-in ceremony on January 24 at 7:00 p.m. And Commissioners, you all are welcome to join us as well. And we also look forward to your consideration of the pesticide recommendation that we submitted as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a brief question of the HCC representative? Since you all won't be having a December meeting, we did discuss the recommendation that you all sent forward during the last administrative meeting, and we have city staff that's evaluating it and coming back to the commission, and so I just want to make sure that whoever was covering last week's admin meeting reports back to the HCC, that that's something the staff is looking at.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Reconsideration of the request for enlargement of sanitary sewer service boundary for a property located at 2167 Head Lane, legally described as Lot 5 for the Country Club Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County. Director Leland.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Hopefully you can see that slide on your screen. Thank you, Mayor, Commission. This is the reconsideration of the connection or enlargement of the wastewater boundary for the City of Helena. As you can see here, the City of Helena has a wastewater line that was built by the fort back in the late 90s, 1990s and early 2000s. As you can see, located right here, there are old lagoons. When they started to fail, the federal government came in and did an evaluation of what would it be is to redo the lagoons, create their own wastewater treatment plant, or connect to the City of Helena, and they evaluated several alternative routes to be able to come through. And what they settled on was a route through Head Lane, coming up around, and then coming to a lift station over on Horseshoe Bend, and that was the alternative. The federal government negotiated with all of the adjacent property owners to be able to get an easement, and they were the one that did the construction. They paid for the construction, and it was a federal project with the understanding that the city would take it over and had worked in conjunction with the city to be able to figure out this realignment and the whole project. And Mr. Ramirez. And then we're considering to come in here, as Mike Ramirez is located at this property. They're proposing a single-family residence to be able to connect into this line. This whole location in here is very high groundwater, so it is very difficult to be able to get a well, not a well, but a septic system, to be able to actually get in this location because of the high groundwater. It either has to be a very expensive treatment system of Level 2, or you may not be able to get it, just depending on how high that groundwater is. There are several, there are six connections so far to connect it to this line, and so this would be the seventh one that came in. And then with it, we will sign a development agreement, that there will be a waiver of right to protest annexation, any other improvements such as roads and water, when we decide to annex when it's best for the city out in this location to help with the improvements that are needed for a city development. Plus, if there is any proposed land use changes, they have to come back to the City of Helena to get that development agreement changed. So if they wanted to do a subdivision, if they wanted to add commercial property, anything along those lines, they would have to come back in. So in a way, the city has some jurisdiction on how this area develops and what can be done and can't be done. His brother and family came in for the Red Meadow, now the Odd Fellows, so they were connected here. And the reason that I bring it up is because Odd Fellows came in to do a poultry processing plant, so they had to already come back and change it. We did issue that, but they had a development agreement. They came in, did some improvements, and then constructed that. So that is how the process works, and it works very well. And we recently had Alfalfa Lane that we did approve with this development agreement. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions? Yeah? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I guess, a question for us, perhaps. So, given that at our last regular meeting, a Commissioner who, a Commissioner put forward a motion to reconsider, because whenever the meeting, I can't remember the meeting date, but about a month or so ago, this request was voted down. And we, I believe at our last meeting, approved a reconsideration of that, of this, and that's why we're here tonight. And given the fact that there's just the three of us, I'm kind of wondering if it might be a good thing to table it until the next regular meeting. Thought I'd see what you all thought about that, just so we had the full commission here to weigh in.
But what happens if we go ahead?
Mayor, if you go ahead right now, it could, it would have to pass two to one at a minimum. You could table it until the next meeting when all five are here, but that's up to your discretion.
I was just thinking, since we had gone to the trouble to reconsider it, that it might be appropriate for Commissioner Shertliff, I believe forwarded the, or moved for the reconsideration, and I think it'd be good for him to be here, and Commissioner Reed as well, so.
May I ask the owners, what's the urgency of your project? Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is John Ramirez. I'm the brother of Michael and Deborah Ramirez, owners of 2167 Head Lane. My wife and I have been the owners of 2245 Head Lane since 1996, and as the director indicated, we were part of the original discussions about the siting and sizing of the line. But your question tonight is, in terms of the urgency, there was a construction, there was a plan to begin construction later here in December, so a delay potentially till the next meeting, December 18, would just need an adjustment on the part of our contractors, my brother's contractors.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm open to having the discussion about the topic now, or delaying it. I guess I don't have a particular feeling one way or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd say I'm comfortable with having that discussion as well. It's just, given the fact that, for example, Commissioner Shertliff had brought forward the reconsideration, seemed like it might be appropriate for him to be here, and Commissioner Reed as well. That's my only thought.
Okay, I hear you.
If there's a motion, I'm happy to second it. I will say I think that, not this project in particular, but the entire concept that we are considering, I think, has broader growth and policy implications that I think we continue to grapple with. So I, you know, that kind of discussion, I'm always interested in having, and I'm happy to second a motion if Commissioner Logan decides to make it.
So, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I'd move to table the reconsideration of the request for enlargement of sanitary sewer service boundary for the property located at 2167 Head Lane until the next regular meeting of the Helena City Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
The motion on the floor is to table. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Consider a resolution of intent to approve the sale of a portion of park property owned by the City of Helena. Parks Director Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we're here today to propose to the commission that you consider a resolution of intent to approve the sale of a portion of park property owned by the City of Helena. Excuse me. We came before the commission on Wednesday, November 15, at an admin meeting. We're here today to discuss the selling of a sliver of land that the city owns between two commercial lots owned by the Blank family and Balance Chiropractic. It's a difficult sliver of land. It's solid rock, actually, and the offer to purchase was presented by Mr. Blank, who is here today to answer any questions. Staff recommendation would be to move to approve a resolution of intent to sell the park property to Mr. Blank and Mrs. Matt's Blank, and authorize the city manager to enter into a buy-sell agreement and set a public hearing date of December 18, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Smith. Comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intent to sell the park property to Mr. Blank and Ms. Malts Blank, authorize the city manager to enter a buy-sell agreement and set a public hearing date of December 18, 2023, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Consider a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United Treasury's state and local recovery grant funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss used for general government services. Administrator Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As you mentioned, on November 15, the commission gave consensus direction to staff to bring forward a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United Treasuries and local recovery grant funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss for general government services. The distributions would be as follows. $80,000 is a contribution to the city's residential energy efficiency and renewable energy loan program. $9,000 to support a study from the Memorial Park Warming House for additional improvements, and $100,000 for the general fund, of general fund savings to the Friendship Center to help purchase the original Friendship Center location at 1503 Goughton Avenue. There was a question that came up at the last administrative meeting related to that last allocation for the Friendship Center, I believe it came from Commissioner Dean, as to how that organization intends to build capacity to support the additional square footage that would be created through that purchase of the additional space. I believe that the executive director is here to answer that question, should you choose to have her come forward. Otherwise, that's everything for me.
Thank you, Administrator Opitz. Comments or questions from the commission? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury, state, and local recovery grant funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss used for general government services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion?
Mr. Mayor, maybe if we could just hear from Friendship Center really briefly, I think that'd be great.
Hello, I'm Gina Bezdorfer, the Executive Director of the Friendship Center. We did bring some copies as well. Can I come hand them to you guys? So this is a much, not much longer, but a longer version that I'll just summarize briefly, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. In the past five years, the Friendship Center has more than doubled our operational budget, and we've hired a variety of administrative, programmatic, and development staff to help with the increases, but then also as a part of our long-term plan. And so we want to make sure that we're balancing that programmatic, administrative, and development need as we grow, so that we stay very sustainable. We, in June, approved a three-year strategic plan that is really focused on what those needs are going to be for the Friendship Center, as well as a service audit, to make sure that the services we're providing to the community are still meeting the needs of the clients that we're serving. And a part of that plan is a three-year capacity-building plan that involves hiring additional staff. So in June, we were able to hire a development coordinator. Our next plan is to hire a programs director, and then a volunteer coordinator, and then from there we'll continue to expand.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Consider a resolution to amend Resolution Number 19818 that create a special improvement lighting district, Number 222, to alter the boundaries by adding 23 street lights and to add property in SILD, Number 222, in the city of Helena, Montana. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight, I have before you a petition to amend street lighting district, Number 222. It is located in the Mountain View Meadows Craftsman Village Development. As that development expands, we received petitions to add, add additional street lights to the district. At this time, we received a petition to add 23 street lights and to expand the boundaries of the district by 98 properties, which equates to, I think the square feet is 729,154 square feet to the whole district. The proposed amendment actually reduces the average cost per square foot to everyone in the entire district, so this is not considered a major modification to the district and does not require a public hearing or a period of protest. With the addition of the 23 street lights, it's calculated to estimate at .0324 cents per square foot of property. That, as an estimate for all properties that will be within the district, including the annexed properties, is about $227 per year. There is a little bit higher average cost for the properties coming in, about $241 that I averaged out across the actual new properties coming in, but district-wide, the cost will be about $227 a year. This will make the number of street lights out, out in that particular special improvement district to 160 lights. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution to amend Resolution Number 19818 that created special improvement lighting district, Number 222, to alter the boundaries by adding 23 street lights and to add property in SILD, Number 222, in the city of Helena, Montana.
Second.
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Consider a first passage of an ordinance establishing accessory dwelling unit zoning regulations and eliminating off-street parking requirements for accessory dwelling units by amending Chapter 4 and Chapter 22 of Title 11 of the city of Helena Code. Planner Shirley, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Staff recommends first passage of this ordinance complying with Senate Bill 528, which passed the Montana Congress earlier this year. This establishes a definition for accessory dwelling units and prohibits restrictive regulations for ADUs. Helena City Code currently allows accessory dwelling units on any property where a single dwelling unit currently exists, in any zoning district. Within the past three years, approximately 15 detached accessory dwelling units have been permitted. However, those would have had a restrictive factor requiring a second, or an additional off-street parking space. So, city code will be updated to remove off-street parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, and as well establish a definition for accessory dwelling units that is currently now codified in chapter, or in Title 76, Chapter 2, Part 345 of the Montana Code.
Okay, that explanation, I swear.
Terrible.
It was something, but I hear you. Any comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve first passage of an ordinance establishing accessory dwelling unit zoning regulations and eliminating off-street parking requirements for accessory dwelling units by amending Chapter 4 and Chapter 22 of Title 11 of the Helena City Code.
Second.
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Consider first passage of an ordinance revising subdivision review procedures phased subdivision requirements, expedited subdivision review processes, requirement for determining, determination of subsequent hearing when considering a new information, revising the criteria and review requirements of exempt division, and providing criteria exemption and administrative process, and an appeal process for a certain minor subdivision by amending Chapter 2 and Chapter 5 of Title 12 of the Helena Citizen Code. Planner Shirley, you have the floor.
Again, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. At least I have a round two. I'll try to make this a little bit better. So staff is recommending first passage of this ordinance as well, updating the city of Helena subdivision regulations to comply with new state statutes. This is making changes regarding phased subdivisions. Phased subdivisions will only require a public hearing if more than five years have passed since approval of preliminary plat. Changes regarding expedited subdivisions, before subdivisions were, including requests for variance, were not allowed. Now, they are, but the timeline for holding public hearing is extended to 45 working days. Changes to exempt subdivisions in Senate Bill 158, revising family transfers of divisions. A division within a platted subdivision is exempt from additional subdivision review if it is gifted or sold to a member of the landowner's immediate family and meets additional criteria. The division may be transferred regardless of age and may be owned jointly with that immediate family member's spouse. An immediate family member or the spouse of an immediate family member who receives a family transfer may not transfer or otherwise convey the division of land for two years after the date of the division. To address hardship situations, an immediate family member may request a variance from the city commission. However, that two-year requirement may be less than two years if the government body chooses so. And then additionally, changes are being made to minor subdivisions or subdivisions that create five or fewer lots from attractive record. This administrative process will now be conducted by the community development department. Joining property owners will still be notified by mail. Appeals will be forwarded to the city manager, and within 15 working days, heard by the city commission. Staff again recommends this approval of this ordinance. Any questions?
Thank you, Planner Shirley. Comments or questions from the commission?
I think that was very clear of a very complicated law, so thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of an ordinance revising subdivision review procedures, phased subdivision requirements, expedited subdivision review processes, requirements for determination of subsequent hearing when considering new information, revising the criteria and review requirements of exempt divisions, and providing criteria exemptions and an administrative process, and an appeals process for certain minor subdivisions by amending Chapter 2 and Chapter 5 of Title 12 of the Helena City Code.
Second.
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Helena to apply for a community development block grant, CDBG, Economic Development Grant administered by the Montana Department of Commerce on behalf of Paymaster LLC, a subsidiary of Old Salt Co-op LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute any document necessary for the grant application and award. Planner, Senior Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As mentioned, we are seeking, the city is considering sponsorship of a community development, economic development grant. This would be the first in decades, as I understand things, so it's exciting to be able to bring this forward to you tonight. In the summer, staff from Montana Business Assistance Connections approached the city, asking whether we'd consider sponsorship for Paymaster LLC, a subsidiary of Old Salt LLC, so that they can get some necessary working capital to get their two new ventures in town up and running, the first of which is a cut-and-rap facility on the east side of Town on Bozeman Avenue, and the second one is the soon-to-be-opened Union at the site of the former Burton Ernie's on Last Chance Gulch. Essentially, the way that this program works, and this is a very simplistic explanation, but for every net new job created, they are able to leverage $35,000 in very low-interest loans, where the jobs created 51% or greater are serving those who are low to moderate income earners in the community. As mentioned, it is in the form of a loan, so as the funds are repaid with interest, they will come back into the city's revolving loan fund, and they will be sequestered for future use by Mback to then lend out for future grant purposes, or loan purposes, I'm sorry, to businesses within the city limits. So with that, the motion before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution authorizing the city of Helena to apply for the community development block grant, economic development grant administered by the Montana Department of Commerce on behalf of Paymaster LLC, a subsidiary of Old Salt Co-op LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute any document necessary for the grant application and award. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have of me. Eric Seidenzicker from Mback is also present, as is Cole Mannix on behalf of Paymaster LLC slash Old Salt LLC.
Thank you, Senior Planner Ray. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution authorizing the city of Helena to apply for a community development block grant, CDBG, Economic Development Grant administered by the Montana Department of Commerce on behalf of Paymaster LLC, a subsidiary of Old Salt Co-op LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute any document necessary for the grant application and award.
Second.
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Commissioner, or... I gave you a promotion, Tim. Mr. Burton, my name is Pat McKelvey. My mailing address is 2850 Grizzly Gulch Drive, for the record. The reason I'm here tonight is to call to your attention again, an issue that happened to me this summer, to our land, from the city operation of Chessman Reservoir. On June 11th, my wife and I noticed water coming across one of our meadows where there had never been water before, coming from a drainage, and we walked it back, and it was coming from the overflow on Chessman Reservoir. So, I called and I received no response. I went down to the plant at McDonald Pass and buzzed on the gate. I understand it's locked up, I get that. No, no reply. Pushed it again, no answer. Pushed it a third time, and no answer. So instead of getting mad and ramming the gate like I wanted to do, I started to back up, and I noticed that there was a call, a number to call in the event of an emergency on the 10-mile system. So I called that, and it rang, and rang, and rang. Nobody answered. Pretty soon, I got an answering machine saying, "Hi, welcome to the city of Helena. How can we help you? Leave a message." Beep, and that was it. About that time, a man coming out opened the gate, and I told him, "I need to talk to you." His name was Ben, and I believe he's the manager of the system. And I told him what was going on. He said, "Well, there's nothing we can do. What do you want us to do?" I said, "What do you mean, there's nothing you can do? I know what you can do. You put water back in the system." "No, that's our, that's our summer storage. We need to leave it." Well, it was full, and I, I have a history with the city because I was DES, worked for county DES, so I understand flooding in the 10-mile system, believe me. There was none. The USGS graph on 10-mile creek was on a steady decline from the date, June 11th, that I'm telling you about. I wasn't watching it before that. So there was no reason to be holding it at full pool and above for Chessman Reservoir. Well, this continued, and no, no comment from the city. So finally, I called, I think that's when I contacted you about what's going on here. And I received a request then for a meeting on-site. This is about 10 days after that original contact, which I granted. And Ben, Mr., well, Public Works Director, can't remember his name, and a third party came up. And the Public Works Director was very interesting. He was taking pictures, he was looking. By now, it had started to cut through the field. He said, "I'll get back to you by noon tomorrow with what it is that we're going to do here." Well, noon tomorrow came and went. 10 days, nothing. So again, I contacted Mr. Burton. And I received a call from him in about an hour, and he apologized profusely for not getting back to me as he had said, but he never said a thing about what he was going to do. Total silence about what they could do. Well, I'll try to speed this up. After several days and no communication and silence, utter silence, I contacted, I kept trying to contact, I sent you guys pictures, all of you, of what we were now seeing as three channels of water coming through our meadow. The meadow was totally useless. I cut, I sell 20-foot logs in firewood lengths, and that was one of my project sites that I have an agreement with the Forest Service to operate on. I filed a Freedom of Information request with the city, and from the city, I received an operating plan, about an inch and a half thick, and an emergency operation plan. That emergency operation plan contained a contact list, should they need to get ahold of affected, possibly affected landowners, adjacent landowners, both public and private. They started the call tree at 450 Lump Gulch. That's several miles from our place, and it's clear over on the Park Lake Road. We're the first private landowner outside of this, of that particular drainage that Chessman drains into, but we weren't on the contact list. I called the DES coordinator in Jefferson County, whose signature block was on this emergency operation plan. No signature, just a signature block, and asked him if, why, what in the world is this thing? Have you seen this? Did you agree with it? He said, "I don't know what you're talking about. I've never seen it." So, from the Forest Service, I got, from my FOER request, I got the actual permit that the city has to operate Chessman Reservoir in the system on Forest Service ground. That was interesting, because it has protection of archaeological sites, no excessive siltation, protection of the fishery, protection from excessive soil loss, timber loss, I mean, all kinds of things. And yet, the city still said, "No, they didn't have anything they could do about it."
Could you wrap up, please, sir?
Yeah. So, here I am, and your, I filed an insurance claim against, with the city carrier. That gentleman looked around, we, I took him back, showed him the route that the water came through. It was then tunneling, the big trees, the balls were, tree ball, everything was falling in, it was collapsing, it's a mess up there, you can't get anywhere. I can't access that part of my property anymore. It, and, and yet, the city still remained silent. Their insurance carrier sent me a, I guess, a decision a few weeks ago, saying that he was unable to determine the source of the water. Well, that just is crazy. They're sandbagging, I know that's a term used in floods, but... So, I, I just want this commission to be aware of what is going on, and the silence, and the way they're treating. This is, this is no way to treat adjacent landowners. I just wrote a, no, I'll cut this short. I just wrote a paper on responsibilities of land ownership, published in Northwest Woodlands Magazine and the Montana Tree Farm Magazine, and believe me, this doesn't qualify... And believe me, this doesn't qualify for any requirements of ownership of either public or private. If you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Commissioners. Manager Burton, would you look into what's going on, please, and let us know?
Yes, I will, Mayor. I do know what's going on, and, you know, we're at the process where if there is liability, we engage our insurance carrier, and that's the stage that we're at at this point. But I'll look into it further to see what conclusions they've drawn.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Do we have any final comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.